Tuesday, April the seventh, twenty twenty to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance by Council and Ratcliffe and then the invocation by Council again.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All of this, please bow your head. Heavenly Father, we ask your grace today, as we come to you as a municipal government who has some fun trying to get together to meet and do the business of our people. We ask that you put your guiding hand on us as we work tonight to do all the things that are necessary to lead, to develop budgets, and to work and grow our community. We ask these in all your name and your grace. Amen.
All right, Mr. Burton, if you would call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Penn?
Here.
Mr. Dawson?
Here.
Mr. East?
Here.
Mr. Goodman?
Here.
Mr. Collins, Abson, Mr. Ratcliffe?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
I don't have any modifications that I know of. Um, like to welcome those folks that are here. We, we actually have a couple of guests in the room tonight. Thank you for coming out. From there, we're gonna move on to presentations. So, Mr. Stripling, if you would like to go ahead and, uh, come over and state, go over to the podium there, state your name and, and...
Hello, I'm Kathy Stripling, and as president of the Board for Pulaski on Main, I'm here representing the board members and director, and their input is included in this presentation. Um, thank you, Mayor, Council, and staff for giving me time to speak today and letting me be here in person considering the current restrictions. It's important to have a group with a dedicated focus on improving downtown. Having downtown revitalization become a fraction of a larger organization will dilute focus and slow momentum. The town will be better served to invest in an organization that is solely focused on improving downtown. Having a multi-pronged approach to economic development, including the Chamber, EDA, and a Virginia Main Street organization, um, that is solely folk, or, sorry, I lost my place, and a Virginia Main Street organization has proven successful for many Virginia communities. Positive publicity about Pulaski is at an all-time high for the past decade. Pulaski on Main's efforts have secured widespread free advertising through publicity, including extensive TV, radio, and newspaper coverage. Anecdotal reports of what's happening in Pulaski have been noted by numerous citizens and interested volunteers. Switching the narrative about Pulaski has been a key area of focus and remains a top priority. Focus on downtown has delivered significant dividends. For example, the assessed value of West Main Development Properties eighty-five, eighty-seven West Main and ninety-four West Main was seventy thousand dollars combined at purchase. Their recent combined assessed value after over one million in renovations is eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Pulaski on Main has been involved with securing over eight hundred thousand in public and private foundation grants for projects downtown over the past two years. Many of these investments have been through agencies who've sworn they would never invest in Pulaski again due to past debacle, their works, not ours. We have changed the perspective and increased state support for the town. Quitting Virginia Main Street may signal to investors that the momentum and focus on downtown Pulaski is fading. To quit Virginia Main Street may cause us to lose state support and DHCCD support specifically because we quit their programs. The Virginia Main Street program creates a framework for citizens, investors, and volunteers like me to focus our attention on downtown and provides a system to build grassroots support in the community. Hundreds of citizens, business partners, and volunteers have been working to improve downtown. Contributions include starting up Pulaski on Main through community efforts and associated programs like Love Works, the Marketplace Pie Baking Contest, Local Foods Local Places, and the ARC-funded Pulaski Works Project. Many of the, these volunteers, including our board members, give their time and skills to numerous efforts in town. And Pulaski on Main is here to support them. To quit Virginia Main Street program signals that the time and effort citizen volunteers have committed to these projects are not important and would cause many to be discouraged. Pulaski citizens aren't quitters, and we don't want to be perceived as quitters. Um, I'd like to know your thoughts. Is the revitalization of Main Street and downtown important to you?
I have one more question for you.
Yeah?
Where did you hear we was quitting it at?
I've heard concern about financially supporting it, and if we don't have financial support, then we can't continue to run the program.
If you've heard that we're quitting Pulaski on Main, I've not heard that.
Okay.
The, the, the concern is...
I've heard that rumor, and I'm concerned about it.
Yeah, there's a rumor going around town that we're planning on quitting on Pulaski on Main. Our concern, I think, was the amount of money that was being asked as an increase potentially versus currently level funding, funding it, or adding more money to the program. I don't think there's debate as to whether, yet, as to whether or not Pulaski on Main should remain. You guys have only been doing this for a couple of years. It's hard to have substantial results in that short of a time. So you have to be given an opportunity to continue. My, my concern is, you know, taking the budget up to eighty or a hundred thousand dollars, which has been brought up to us. So I'm not sure that we had that.
Several members of this council were here, and if you guys can speak up, Senator Collins wanted exactly how I was here. We originated Pulaski on Main. It was the brainchild of this, this council. Um, it was in conjunction with the Pulaski Chamber of Commerce, and the goals at that time were very clearly detailed and outlined. We, in, in lieu of the, the increase in, of the requested increase or suggested increase in the Pulaski on Main funding, I think we as a council have an obligation to look at what we're getting for our money. Or, let me rephrase, what we're getting for the taxpayers' money and, and what, what, what the bang for the buck is. Because it is an investment, and the expectation is that there's a return. So I think this council, um, the concerns that were raised were, um, were in that vein. Then what are we getting for our money? And that conversation hasn't fully played out yet due to, due to interruptions of, of public COVID-nineteen.
The last meeting I was at about a month ago, there was some conversation about whether or not it would be supported, and could you just follow the Main Street program without, um, contributing financially to an organization? And that concerned me.
Well, sorry, uh, uh, as I recall, a part of that, that presentation regarding, um, the Virginia Main Street program, it even says in their own literature that you're not required to be a paying member of, of, of Virginia Main Street to participate and, and, and have some benefits from that. So that was, that was stated in their literature, and I think it was. In fact, I think I may have mentioned that, asked some questions about what that entailed, so...
Well, my question would be if we're not supporting a program director financially, then who is taking the lead to run that?
We, we have a, we have a cutting funding for a program director.
Okay.
It's, uh, in, in going back to, to your question about paying to be in Virginia Main Street versus being part of the Virginia Main Street program, that my question is, if you can participate in the Virginia Main Street program for free or take advantage of it, why are we paying a, a membership fee? What, what do we get from that membership fee versus taking those funds and using them directly as part of our program? So, I, I don't, I don't know what we're paying for that.
So it wasn't a question of not participating, it was a question of supporting, giving more support to the organization versus the state?
It, it's, it's, do we give money to the state to pay for membership in a program? Or do you take those funds and use them here locally, directly? You know, and how much, how much is needed for that?
In your own Main Street program?
Correct.
Okay. Not in some other way?
So, so we have an obligation to, to spend that money, whatever money we spend wisely. And we, uh, this council has been very proactive in growing, trying to grow the community. That's what our, that's where our tax base comes from. So we're all about growth. Um, that's the reason we originally pursued the idea of Pulaski on Main with the Chambers, Assistant, or basically the Chamber-led initially when this concept was developed some years ago. So we, but we do have an obligation to understand what we're getting in return, and that's key. You know, especially given our budget situation this year and next. With the, the loss of significant revenues, which we don't fully understand yet, we have to spend every penny wisely. And, uh, so we're gonna, we're, we're absolutely gonna scrutinize what we're spending, and I think we have an obligation to the citizens of Pulaski to do that. But we are absolutely pro-growth, pro-business, um, and we have, we have nothing against Pulaski on Main. We created it.
And you, and you wanna continue?
We are gonna, we are gonna look at what's, what's best for the community and what's best for the, uh, going forward with Pulaski on Main from a financial standpoint.
Do you see it continuing to be a standalone organization?
That's, uh, that's a conversation that will have to happen with this council, so...
Okay.
We, we can't answer that at this point.
And that's certainly what it was created to be. Nevertheless, well, as you said, a multiple-pronged approach in a community is a strong thing, so that's, that's how it was created. That's how it was generated. Uh, it was generated from, to, out of a desire of this, of this council and, and Chamber and other like-minded individuals just like you guys to make sure that we, you know, we're doing everything we could to help facilitate in, in that area. It did not start as a forty-five or fifty thousand dollar financial organization. It did not begin that way. It's not how it's constructed, because it has grown to that point. And so, you know, I can see how it would be easy to believe that there was a step back in the feeling of importance of Pulaski on Main because we as a town are in major financial conversations. So maybe you guys find yourselves, or that organization finds itself as part of that, but it is part of the town. It is part of the financial picture of the town, and everything is on the table of us trying to understand what we can truly afford. There, there are staff-paid jobs within the town that are potentially losing position. So it's not personal to Pulaski on Main, while I know it is personal to everyone involved. And I can assure you, it's personal to me. I was on the Chamber side of that conversation at the time of its creation. So Pulaski on Main is extremely, you know, personal in, in my understanding of, of how important having that collaborative effort there. But we all, but we can't, we cannot spend money that we don't have. And that, that, I think, is what Mr. Reese spoke towards, our financial obligation, is to make sure that we're doing everything that we can with the dollars that we have. And so, at no point in time for me, and I don't think for any other members of this council, was that conversation about, uh, losing sight of the importance of that collaboration. It's, it's, it's making sure that we're doing everything we can within what is possible for us to do with what money we have. We would never want to see the collaborative efforts and the collaborative efforts of community members engaged in, in the process. You clearly are volunteer, you know, towards this passion. Um, and, and no part of that that we ever want as a community to ever go away. It's important, but conversations have to happen of how much of the taxpayers' money can we put into that at any given time? No different than any other staff position in the town, um, or any other expense of the town. It has to come in question, you know, and make sure that on any given year or any given moment that we're investing appropriately. And I think that's all the conversation is about, and I think, uh, we have, we, we have an obligation, as is said, to do so. And, and, and appreciate y'all's input along the way.
Okay, well, thank you. It encourages me to hear, um, what you've had to say. And I just wanna say one more time that I feel strongly that we need an independent organization with a paid person that is solely focused on downtown and that revitalizing our downtown is key to having other people want to invest in our community. If our downtown is crumbling, then people lose interest in investing in all parts of town. So, um, in closing, I'll just say over a hundred Virginia communities are currently participating, participating in Virginia Main Street, and the participation is funded, is supported financially by their local governments. And so that's over a hundred communities that believe in the impact of Virginia Main Street approach on their communities. So we ask you to commit to investing in Pulaski on Main and the Virginia Main Street program. So, thank you, everyone, for your time.
I'd say, thank you. One quick, thank you. Uh, there's not a single word known as the town Pulaski, so I will grant, I will grant to that, including me, one hundred percent. So whoever told you was paying us money is not true, and I have not missed a meeting.
Okay.
It's not true.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate that. Right? Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. All right, I don't have anything under public hearings and public comment period. We had no pre-request prior to meeting for a comment, so as far as I know, we don't have anything going there.
Actually, could I make one public comment?
You can.
Thanks, everybody. Um, just, it came to mind as I was paying attention to the news that, um, we have a municipal election coming up in May, and we have a global pandemic happening at the same time. And I'm concerned, as somebody who's running for town council, that there's gonna be people going to Central Gym and potentially either getting infected or taking somebody else or something like that. And, um, there has been, obviously, the State Board of Elections has allowed anybody to vote absentee, and that's great. My concern is, is that that's not a widely known or widely accessible idea. And I would encourage the town, um, in an official capacity, to write a letter to the Board of Elections and encourage them, just like Georgia just did, to mail out to all eligible voters a request for an absentee ballot. And that way, everybody can get one in their, they don't have to go, if you don't have Internet access, or you don't feel comfortable, if you're, you know, one of those people, you could still have the ability to request an, uh, an absentee ballot from the comfort of your own home without going out, without exposing yourself. If you're somebody who's sick or older, or in other ways, just wanna limit your exposure and your ability to expose other people. And I would encourage the town to write a letter to the, um, to the, either the governor, the Board of Elections. Um, I know the Registarians Association has encouraged that. There hasn't been any updated guidance, but I think if there is a critical mass of towns that do that, I think, A, it just sort of looks out for both the, the people who are voting, and in particular, the poll workers, who are really, I mean, there's a lot of people there who are older or retired, and so may, um, may be, you know, at, at higher risk than the average person. And so the fewer people that actually have to go to the polls, the better. So that's my comment for this, uh, for the town, and I hope everybody takes, if, if anybody has any questions, have it up.
So, so we're legal here. Can we get your name and address for record, please?
Michael Reese. Uh, I'm on eleven seventeen Prospect Avenue, near Pulaski. And so, yeah.
I do know they had an election, uh, in Indiana today. It went very well, I...
Well, I mean, it may go well, but at the same time, you know, we, we are, we are at a much higher, I mean, this community in this part of the state has a higher level of people who are ill, a higher level of people who are above sixty-five, who are the people who are really at risk. Um, and so I think that, you know, it's not that much to mail out, it's, it's not even meant to mail out a ballot, 'cause that's not, I think, on the table legally speaking. But the, certainly, the registrar could mail out to all registered voters in town a absentee request form. And those people who are in, who are inclined to do so can do that. And, you know, it has a sheet on there that just says, you know, what you have to fill out if you are, you know, concerned about the COVID-nineteen. And, uh, or, at the very least, I think the town should, it would be, it would be, uh, a good thing for the town to regularly post on social media a link to the relevant part of the, of the website.
Patriot had that out.
Yeah, Patriot did have that out today, but I think there could be, you know, a lot more of it. There could be more of it. I think it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt if, um, if more, more, uh, more visibility of that was possible. Thank you.
From there, we'll move to the consent agenda. If you've had a chance to look at the minutes from the March third, twenty twenty council meeting, or accept a motion to approve those?
I'd like a motion to approve the March third, twenty twenty council meeting minutes.
Sorry. Your motion is set. All those in favor, please stick by, by saying aye?
Aye.
And opposed?
Okay.
Move on to the project update.
I will stand tonight, if that's okay? Um, you have in the pack, in the packet, the, uh, oh, actually, I don't think you had the actual updated spreadsheet, 'cause we didn't have much going on, as you might imagine, with the, the COVID, um, uh, issues that we've been dealing with. Uh, there are a few summaries or, uh, notes in the packet summary. Good news is the contractors in town for the downtown project started work yesterday. Have a, um, a, a few hiccups today, but they're, they're well on their way to getting at least the pocket part done. Uh, we are finalizing, have, we're having some difficult, um, times with the, um, the pricing on the, uh, the downtown facade work. Just having one contractor, it's always difficult to, to get the, uh, the prices down to where it's, it's doable. We're still working through those. We actually have a couple meetings later this week to hopefully finalize, um, some of them. Um, and then, um, although you noticed that over at the train station, we have a lot of pallets of, of shingles and a lot of wood that's stored inside, so the, the work on the, on the roof and the eaves will, uh, begin here next, uh, week or, or so, so we can get the, uh, the rotten wood, uh, replaced. I don't know if I've updated council on this, but we were able to, when we, I inquired to the, um, the manufacturer of the roofing material about a warranty, we were, uh, eligible for forty-some thousand and change of a, of a warranty remaining. So, um, that we haven't received the check, but we've done all the, all the due diligence, all diligence, and all the agreements necessary for that. So, um, that'll be a, a, a nice little unexpected infusion of, of money that we can either put into the reserves, or we can put into the building, or, you know, once we get it and everything's done, I think it's probably best, since it's not a restriction to it, just go ahead and include, put it in reserves and thank them for, for having. And India, excuse me, the other, that note there on the, on the, um, packet summary really is relative to the, the COVID-nineteen, all in all. Of course, like everybody else, the police academy has experienced a lot of challenges and delays in, in the current recruiting class, and we're, we're, we don't have a good grasp on the narcotics unit implementation date yet, but I think it's gonna be safe to say that it's gonna have to be delayed a bit until we get, get those folks graduated from the, from the police academy. Glad to answer your questions.
Regarding the, I'm sorry, um, regarding the downtown facade program, I think there've been conversations that, is, the monies, those, do those monies have to be consumed by October as well?
They're supposed, they're supposed to be spent by then, but with all the COVID and everything else, I fully expect them to, to now give us, um, uh, some, some expectations. You know, so I, what I want to get it done by October, um, the necessity may not be as, as high as it was three months ago.
They did talk in one of the White House, uh, uh, briefings about extending CDPG. Um, I know they've extended some of them already. I think it'll just be a matter of, if the folks that are doing the latter half of the year being able to demonstrate that this is delayed implementation and submit those requests. It seems like the, the folks at the White House have been pretty understanding of that and willing to, to work with us. But even if we get longer, you know, the, the goal is this is done by October, before October, and it's been delayed for a number of just BS reasons, to be honest. And so I'd like to see that the staff put their effort forward to stay on schedule and, and not delay this further into the fiscal year, I think.
I would agree with that.
We do need to keep our eyes open as we get closer to that date to make sure that we fill out the necessary, uh, keep these things...
We, we, we keep in touch with the, the UFRS on a regular basis?
Only if we don't succeed in completing by October.
Sorry, I just, I don't, I can't help it.
If we can demonstrate that we get it done on time, even with everything going on, that helps us in our case for future CDPG projects. And, you know, we've done so well with them over the years, um, that we need to be able to show why it is that we continue to get approved for these grants.
That, that is an important point. It, it, it adds street credit.
I agree.
Can we update some of the filter plan?
Yes, sir. Um, so we've had a contractor in this week, um, doing a lot of the, uh, the demo work. And, uh, I see Mr. Pegg go up on the TV screen, enjoying life at home, but he may wanna add to it. But, uh, we've, we've been doing demo work up there, and, uh, they're waiting on some of the materials to be delivered to us. And, uh, we, the, on the financial side, we should have the, uh, all the resolutions and everything for the council's May sixth council meeting to, to be able to close on the one thing.
And one, one question perhaps for Bill would be, when do we think that they're gonna be able to wrap it up and get the other filters inspected to determine if we're in the same boat with those three?
Um, I think he's still gonna try to meet his deadline, and that's all depending on the, the, uh, production of the new filter bed. Um, they've got all their demo work completed today, so they're waiting on the manufacturer of the new filter bed.
Do we have to know if that manufacturer is still in production, or are they furloughed for now?
They are still in production as far as we know.
Anyone else? That will take us to old business. Over to you, Sean, for fiscal year nineteen twenty budget review and discussion.
Well, before we start on the, uh, the specific budget years, I wanted to at least throw out what I'd recommend for a, a, uh, budget timeline, and it's a, a short one, uh, because I'm not sure how much, honestly, there, there, there can be, or, or, um, as far as meetings and such. But we, we need the, at least, to hold, or I'm proposing to hold, uh, three public hearings at the May sixth council meeting. Um, the first one would be relative to the Brookmont, um, VDH project, where we've agreed to increase rates on water rates by at least three percent a year for three years. If, if I remember correctly, this, I should look this up. It's either year two or year three, maybe year three of that, of that commitment. We're not recommending increases on the sewer for this upcoming budget year. For, even though we, we do expect some increases to the temporary, uh, costs, uh, we also are anticipating, have, have close conversations with James Hardy. Uh, they don't see any, um, expect, they don't have any expectations of decreasing their water usage, sewer usage. So the flows that we've been experiencing the last several months should, should continue, so the income should stay where it is. Um, so we won't necess, wouldn't necessarily need the, um, the sewer increases.
I wanna, I wanna be clear on this. It's a hundred thousand dollars on this, um, it's, it's a, you know, it's eight thousand dollars a month. Um, so you're, you're not seeing a need to increase the rates to cover that. And you're not seeing that we're gonna, uh, see a decrease in funds available to be able to work on the sewer system and do maintenance as well as some repairs that we've been putting off.
Right. If you look at the, um, and we can, one of the attachments, I love my, my favorite color sheet, that we've, that we've used for the last several years, if you just...
um, that we've, that we've used for the last several years, if you just look over to the, um, fourth, fifth page for sewer, this is page five. Um, you can kind of see where we stand currently in the current fiscal year. We're ahead of the game by a, a good margin. And if that kind of relates back to those sewer flows through, um, James Hardy, if those flows continue, that the game should be just as equal next year as, as it is this current year. Um, the good news with, with Pepper's Fairy is those costs, at least on the budget side, are always on a five-year average. So five years ago, we were still a fairly low, um, flow. So there, our rates are based on that lower flow. Uh, now, in four or five years from now, when we're basing the rates on the current flows, um, you know, our, we, we may see some, some bigger increases from Pepper's Fairy. But at this point, we're at the, we're at, we're in the game side of, of that, of that game, rather than the loss side. A couple of years ago, we were in the loss side because we had low flows, but before that, we had high flows that were, you know, we were trying to fight on the rates. So, uh, you know, right now, I think this is the time that you take those funds and you put them into the, you know, reserves and, and, and wait until you're on that other side again. I don't know if you follow my, my train of thought.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just making sure, um, you know, nobody wants to raise rates, but I, I want to make sure that we're still paying our bills and not getting into reserves to do so.
Yeah, and, and just a reminder, the, um, the, the Davenport recommendation was only a one point five percent. So that's, you know, that's inflation, basically, but I'm, I'm thinking that right now, the, the way I would, the way I'm, I'm, I'm seeing the budget, it, it appears as though the, um, the usage will overcome that inflation need. Uh, so the, uh, the, the other two public hearings were, would be for the current year, budget year amendment that gets us to the projections, the revised, revised, revised projections to, um, finish out the current cap, um, fiscal year. And then, of course, the FY twenty one, um, I'm calling it a bookmark budget, because it's simply, you know, it's simply that it's something that we're, we can do to meet our, our expectations requirements in the charter. We know we're going to be back here doing the, um, you know, the, the full budget work session, um, uh, work in July, August. If this, if this continues beyond that, uh, you know, it's, we'll, we'll have some, some serious discussion or some serious, uh, decisions to make. But I can get to what I've got in, in a little more detail on those here in a minute for, for our FY twenty one budget. Um, any questions on the proposed timeline, at least for now? We can talk a little bit more after we indulge in the budget. Uh, so under the old business, under, on item A, just wanted to review some of the things that we're currently doing in the current fiscal year that we want to, um, highlight. Um, you know, as you, as you remember, we have, we've frozen hiring, we've frozen, um, spending and, um, um, non-essential spending. You know, if there's a contractual requirement or if there's a, uh, you know, a necessity required, uh, you know, we're, we're, we're paying our bills that we need to pay. But, um, but again, non-essential spending, we're, we're holding, um, holding back. And for the projections, what I've done, in addition to what you've already seen, um, is for the, um, let's go down to the revenues that a lot of, um, item A, one. Um, as you'll, as you'll certainly understand, with the COVID nineteen pandemic, we expect the biggest decrease or hit to our budget to be between sales tax and the mills tax. Um, occupancy tax will, will get, will, will be hit too, but it's such a small portion of our budget, it doesn't account for much financially. You know, you could lose fifty percent of that and still only lose fifteen thousand dollars. So it's, you know, it's, it's a percentage wise, it can be a big hit, but number wise, for a ten million dollar budget, fifteen thousand dollars can be made up somewhere else. Um, conversely, the, the, uh, you know, the mills tax, we're, we're projecting, um, back, back up a minute. We were ahead on the mills tax, so the losses that we were, were projecting for the last quarter are almost going to be equalized because we were that far ahead on the mills tax.
What was our total revenue on mills tax, sorry, that anticipated this year?
The anticipated was nine hundred and seventy thousand, where, um, as of, um, yesterday, we were right at eight hundred thousand. Um, so I think we're going to, we'll, we'll feel good about hitting that nine hundred and seventy thousand, even with lower, um, sales that, that we're, um, I see a questionable look from Mr. Griffin.
Well, you've got a full quarter left in the fiscal year, and two thirds of that quarter, you're, you're pretty much shut down for, for a lot of things. So I, I'm trying to figure out how you think, if you see a hundred thousand, eighty thousand. So you're talking about?
Forty thousand, fifty thousand.
Well, e- each quarter, we're doing about two hundred and sixty, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Right.
And you're thinking you're going to ca- collect about sixty percent of that still.
Talking with the restaurants, um, surprisingly, um, you know, we have some restaurants that are, that are higher on sales than, than normal. Uh, we have, you know, several that are, that are lower and, um, you know, most of them are in that thirty, forty percent loss range. We have a couple that are, like I said, are much higher than their normal sales. So, you know, looking at the numbers, you know, I feel pretty, pretty good about getting close to that or getting to that nine hundred and seventy thousand. We were on track to get on this one point one though.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking about the fact that, you know, G P I is shut down and you still have some that are, you know, thirty, forty percent down. And you're basically saying we're going to collect sixty percent of what we've had over the previous quarters. It seems a bit high to me.
Yeah, the, um, uh, I still feel, I mean, feel, feel confident with the numbers. We may come back in mid-May, uh, late May and, and see that I was completely wrong, but right now, I, I honestly feel confident with, with the numbers.
Mills tax probably due the end of the month, right? So what happened?
Middle of the, of the following month.
Middle of the following month.
You'll see, you'll see something like so in, in, in mills through the town, where people aren't driving and leaving the town to eat as much. And so there's a ton of business that leaves this town and goes somewhere else to spend their money. And now, you know, obviously there's a drop that you're giving. You will see some pick up in what, in that new realm from people that have to shop here.
So by May, we should have a good indicator, because this will be basically our March, I guess, March, April, well, April, whatever, first of all month, basically.
Yeah, March, March collections were, you know, of course, from, from February sales, so they were, they were just as strong as, as, uh, uh, the preceding months. Um, we'll see a fair, I bet in April, the bigger, the bigger chunk will be in the May collections, I expect.
Just a note for everybody on Facebook Live here, the folks are telling us that we're still not loud enough.
And we'll talk closer to the microphone, hopefully. Um, looking down at the, some of the other assumptions, you know, we, we've talked about communications tax, um, that we've, it's slowly been, um, lowering ever since the state took over the collections. Um, I still don't have a good answer from the Treasurers Association or the state treasurer about why the percentages keep going down when I'm, uh, assuming, and I think it's a fair assumption, that cell phones are, are not, cellphone usage is not decreasing. Um, but I went ahead and, and we wanted to be more conservative with that projection of the revenue, so we've, we've projected it, um, down to three hundred and seventy. Last fiscal year, we reached three hundred and ninety. We had, um, but we're, we're still going to project it lower at three seventy, just to, uh, to stay on the safe side. Um, on the permits and fees, fines, forfeitures and recreation, all those three together, um, there'll be about an eighty-six thousand dollar increase, but that's, um, uh, fueled mostly by a one-time, uh, payment from the, um, Caffey Park Revenue Sharing, um, that, that will not be a, a continuous annual revenue source at that level. Uh, of course, we're tra- correcting on the transfer from other funds, like the water and sewer, um, uh, transfers, so that doesn't show up on our audit as a due to, due from, due from anymore. Uh, we're, uh, proposing that, go ahead and correct that with the, um, with the budget amendment. And then the other financing resource, sources, when we did the bond for the train station and fire truck, we accepted the bond, we approved fi- funding for the fire truck and for the train station, but we didn't officially amend the budget. So we're adding in that four hundred thousand in revenues and corresponding expenses on the, on the expense side. Um, on the, on the expense side, though, when we, we get the, uh, the workers' comp, uh, costs usually in early June, early to mid-June, so it's beyond the time that, that, that we, we would have to incorporate them. Most of the time, uh, those, the, if there are increases, they're modest, minor. Um, we, they were a little bit higher this, this year, so throughout each of the, the departments, a total of around twenty thousand dollar increase, scattered through the departments for workers' comp insurance, um, community development increase for part-time positions. What I'm trying to do is, I'm, I, I need to spend more time on this to wrap my arms around all the part-time positions. Basically, every part-time administrative position has been charged to be developed this year. So I'm trying to, I want, before the public hearing, I want to get those numbers out to the real departments. So this won't be a thirty-two thousand dollar increase to the community development specific. Some will be to the town manager's department, some will be to community development, some will be for the marketplace side. So we'll, we'll have that, that thirty-two thousand spread out. Um, the savings in the finance department, uh, of moving some of the, um, employees over to the, the water sewer funds for the, um, actual cost rather than the cost allocation plan over on the next page. Um, we've, uh, have, did the same thing with the workers' comp, had a, a few of the insurance, the general liability, uh, insurance costs and, and, um, um, property coverage costs were slightly higher, so we went ahead and increased those, um, budgeted amounts to meet what the actual amounts were. There was about a thirty thousand dollar savings so far. It, it looks like to be a thirty thousand dollar savings in the contributions. Some of it is geared toward, um, from the regional dispatch. We had budgeted, um, monthly payments for the one-time, uh, equipment purchase three years ago, whenever it was. We didn't need to budget the full year for that, uh, because those payments have, have been complete, uh, so went ahead and accounted for that savings. Um, the, uh, for the police department, uh, there was an increase. Some of it was health insurance, you know, we're paying percentages of, of the dependents. Um, when we have new hires, they may have different dependent coverage than the one, the people that they're replacing. Some of the, uh, cost was, was, um, uh, promotions, media promotions, transitions. Some of it was contracts, contract security, which is the in and out. For instance, we provide officers for the Kiyosaki Yankees games. They pay us, we pay the employees. It shows as an expense on our side, the revenue, correspondent revenue. Um, the streets were, uh, those savings were made up from, from the, uh, the vacancies that we, uh, showed some adjustments on. Uh, in general properties, vehicle maintenance, same thing, uh, some of the, uh, the vacancy savings that we, uh, that we are experiencing. Uh, there on number nine, it will show where we've, uh, included the fire truck and the, uh, train station roof repairs in the capital LA. And then on the EPA brownfields, we went ahead and increased that, um, I think it was about a hundred thousand dollar grant funding that we received last year that wasn't spent, that we needed to go ahead and budget for because it was spent this, this, this whole year. I wanted to, you know, go ahead and, and, and reiterate there, you know, for, especially due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, you know, some of the things that we've done to help control more spending, um, and, and, uh, you know, with, with the hiring freeze and the non-essential, uh, expenses. Um, we're really hoping that these savings are going to make this expenditures lower than what is even in this proposed budget, but I'd rather be able to see that savings in the audit rather than, um, um, you know, where we, we, we may have been originally. So that's why I would recommend that we have a May sixth public hearing with these amendments as we present it. Any questions?
So I know there are several line items that, um, you say that, that the insurance costs were higher than what was expected going into this budget. We already had what those rates were going to be, or did they change?
Yeah, we don't, we usually, yeah, I think Mr. Quest's area about this time every year, uh, we, they, that is when we send in everything for the insurance folks. We actually have a conference call tomorrow, Thursday, with, um, the VACOR side to, to start getting those numbers for next year. Um, it's earlier than, than normal, uh, maybe because of the COVID, but usually it's, it's May, early June before we get real numbers. It's after all the budget. And like I said, you know, those costs, if you're going to go five percent, you know, a couple thousand dollars overall, isn't a huge hit. We can usually move numbers around and make it work a little bit more this year because we had some more workers' comp claims and some liability claims.
Some of the charities that took that plan a couple of years ago stayed on our insurance.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, by time for some of them work on, so by time for some of them to roll off.
Yes, sir.
So that's going to be an additional off of that eventually.
We'll get that on, on the next budget year.
Next budget year, we'll see, I'll show you, talk about the savings that we'll get there, twenty, thirty thousand dollar savings.
So do, what have you, uh, proposed in the budget for the, the increase? Just since you talk about health insurance for next year, what number have you factored in at this point?
That number was about four and a half percent, if I remember correctly. We had some folks change benefit, uh, dependents, um, mostly to be good for us, where, you know, people that, that may have left and had dependents, the replacement didn't for, for some of the new ones. Um, but it's about a four and a half percent overall. Um, if we're ready, we can go on to the, the, what, what I have in the package for the, the bookmark budget. Um, really with, with the, with this budget, I, I'm continuing the, um, the current practices of the, the hiring freeze and the non-essential spending, um, hold. And, um, I'm taking those savings, just shot four hundred thousand dollars, and I'm putting it into a budget set aside. Uh, so normal operations are, are, are accounted for in the, in the draft budget. There's some, some funding set aside, um, for what happens if, um, conversations, what happens if, you know, half of the mills taxes, uh, are, are actually going, I don't think it'll be half, they're what, a bigger chunk. What happens if, you know, sales tax, um, cuts or, or that, uh, lower sales tax revenues coming? Uh, so we've, we've got a built-in five percent buffer. Um, that five percent number is, is important, um, because V M L, if, if you guys got the email, V M L had a, 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 a really interesting study that was performed by some college professors in Old Dominion. Um, and it, they, they took a, 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 a close look at, you know, what, what your expectation is on mills tax, what your, what your reliance is on the local tourism taxes versus property taxes and other things. And they've, they've put some recommendations out or expectations or things that you can budget for. And they're, they're thinking we may look at a three to four percent overall budget loss, uh, due to the COVID. You know, I've got, I'm a, you know, uh, almost five percent sitting aside that we can, we can use. So, you know, seeing that study kind of helped me feel better about the numbers that I've been working on already. Uh, but you'll see there in your, in your packet summary, those mainly the five big departments that, that cover the, uh, that four hundred thousand, just shot four hundred thousand dollars, being the community development, police department, general properties, vehicle maintenance and capital outlet. Other than capital outlet, the other four are what the vacancies are, basically. You know, I'm, I'm still pro- proposing or presenting a budget that employs the same number of people we employ today. It may not employ more after all the, all the dust has settled, but where the folks that are getting paychecks today will continue getting paychecks in, in, in the proposed budget. Um, so, you know, that's, that's really the biggest, the biggest change or the biggest thing that I wanted to present or to, to make sure council is aware of. And I'd love to have some comments or some feedback or some direction. Like I said, you know, the recommendation would be to go ahead and hold the public hearings. Uh, the only increase in, in revenues that we're proposing is that water, water rate increase required by the health department. So that would have to hold it, have its own public hearing.
I, I know that we're concerned about the budget, um, and how things are going with COVID. What concerns me is we're not near where we're at in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, after that crash. And we're basically proposing the way to fix it is to not do capital. And, you know, I've always complained about kicking the can down the road, putting this, putting it aside for another year, for another year, for another year. I don't think the solution is to kick the can. And, and, and I, you know, the cuts that we're proposing here, it's all stuff that's the low hanging fruit. You know, these are positions that are already vacant, we'll, we'll take out the capital. There, there isn't any work here that shows me we are making a real conservative cut. We're also not even talking about the fact that we owe our reserves a substantial amount of money. You know, what I had proposed was you come back with eight point seven, this is eight point eight. You know, I think we're still a hundred and twenty thousand over budgeted, it's too optimistic.
Yeah, all I would say is, is that, as I said, this is, this is a bookmark budget and, you know, I, I, I know we're going to have to come back and have those lar- larger discussions, but not having answers today or, or next week or next month, I don't know that those discussions are going to be worth anything until we, we, we have a better idea of, of the full effects. And we can have the discussions and, and, but I don't know that they'll, they'll, they'll mean anything in my personal opinion.
The, the difference is, what we're basically saying is, you know what? We're going to just wait till summer and see what happens to make the tough decisions. That's not what the taxpayers have us here for. You know, we, we've got the ability to at least start talking about what these things are going to be, you know? What is going to have to get cut potentially? If we wait till July, then it's going to be, well, let's rush through it and get it done in July or August.
So the uncertainty lies in the revenue projections. The uncertainty, the uncertainty doesn't necessarily lie in the expenses. And that's where we need to look to see where we can save. Mr. Goodman says an extra hundred and twenty, um, I would suggest maybe more, but.
I think a hundred and twenty is the minimum that we need to do. We, we really need to fix what we've been doing with reserves and what happened as a result of the last fiscal year. And, and, you know, we've all said, that script will not be corrected by tax or rate increases. So that's going to have to be L-type now, you know, more conservative budget. I don't think we're conservative enough yet.
Agreed. I don't, I don't believe that, uh, that holding off until the summer months is necessarily the right thing to do. I think we need to have the hard conversations now and set ourselves up for when this does pass, that we're adjusting the budget, revenues upward. And I think we can totally have the, have the, I think we can completely have the expense side of the discussion now with some, uh, with some, some level of certainty. And again, like I said, we could, you know, hopefully when, when, when this passes, we can adjust our revenues up and, and it'll look even better than it, than it does. So that would be my request, is that we look again at the expense side of the equation and make sure that we're doing everything in our power now, not three months from now, to, to get the best budget that we can get, or at least certainly get us close to the best budget that we can get. We can revisit the, the rest of it, um, when, when we have some more certainty on the revenue side.
I'm going to make a few comments about, you know, I think there's, there's valid points on both of your parts. We have spent countless hours in conference calls, sitting and listening and talking amongst all the local governments in this, in this part of the country. We requested information from all of the, the quote-unquote experts, the VML people and so on. Everyone is pointing to the fact that, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with making sure that we get our expenses in line and so on, and so on, but the fact is that this is such an unknown that whatever we do budget-wise right now will be changed. Now, the strongest recommendation that everyone has made is not to quit working on our budget, but to get a budget in place, have that on the books, knowing that we will be able to go back and adjust that and to not create a bunch of meetings that, that we need to drag people out to and not create problems that are going to turn right around and be totally the opposite the next month. We are maybe the last locality in this part of the country to even be having this discussion right now. Even at the state level, they've, they've kind of put the budget on hold until we see where this thing goes because, you know, we still don't, I sat through a webinar today, federal money, they don't even have a means for us to apply for that yet. It may be December thirtieth before we have an opportunity to ask for help from the federal funds for our localities. So there's so many things about this that are evolving. We can have as many discussions as you want about that, but we need to get on a schedule to get the budget approved and get it out there, whatever that budget is, and get our public hearings done in a timely fashion and make that happen. Just purely for the preservation of the process. No one in this room thinks that the hard work doesn't still need to be done, but we have a lot of new things going on with the hard work that we've never had before. We don't know where those things are going. So it's really important that we get all that scheduled, we get that part taken care of and, and have our bases covered on that, and then we can keep doing the hard work on the side of us.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, but, you know, I understand other communities are thinking it's appropriate just to, to put it off or just to, to a flat level, wall line. The difference is, is we knew going into this budget year that we had some serious fundamental problems with how the budget had been done. And there needed to be substantial cuts in order to make up for, as, as Mr. Penn rightly pointed out, we have not been putting money into reserves, but we've been really good at spending it. And, you know, I appreciate that we don't know what we don't know, and everything's going to change. But there's nothing wrong with pulling up our sleeves and trying to figure out where these cuts are going to come from to help us long-term. And the, the, the revenues are increasing slowly because we're not recruiting business like this council has asked time and time again. And we have programs that need additional funding. We have projects that need to be done from the can being kicked down the road for decades. And so what I'm suggesting is figure out more cuts, figure out more things that we can do to make sure that that money is readily available to start doing things we do. We know we've got these filters that are going to have to be replaced. And we can't keep going to the bank and saying, hey, can I have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, borrow this money? You know, those filters are going to have to be replaced, and they really should be replaced from cash. So we are aware of other problems that are coming up. We know that if this boundary adjustment happens, there's going to be money that we're going to have to expend before we even start seeing our return on that investment. And it will be through debt service, but debt service still requires cash to back it up. So, you know, we, we, we're going to have to, to kind of shrink government a little bit to figure out how to, to do things and pay the bills without asking the taxpayer for more money. And, and my concern is, we're, we're just saying, well, we'll wait till summer. If this thing goes longer, we could wait till fall. You know, we, we're not like Richmond where we can change the law and adjust when things are doing, when they're not doing. You know, I understand that, you know, the mayor and you have been in a lot of meetings. Council has not been invited to those meetings, and we don't get a summary after they occur. So we're working off the knowledge that we've been given from the feds, from VML and so forth. But otherwise, we're kind of dark for what we know. And that's why I'm suggesting that we try to, we set a goal of how much more can we cut? If revenues go up this summer, then cool. You get to figure out what we can invest in, what goes in reserves, what programs can we fund. But I don't want to be here this summer going, you know what? Kick the can down the road, we still need to cut other three hundred thousand dollars.
The timeline for a ratified budget hasn't changed. It's the same as always. So, so we have time to work on this, and I understand we've worked out an alternate, you know, there's concern about having multiple meetings. We've worked out an alternate method within the guidelines that are, that are, that were given to, to actually meet and discuss the budget. I don't want to see us, uh, kick it down the road, uh, as Mr. Goodman stated. I, I think we need to have those discussions now and, uh, see where they take us. But rubber stamping a budget is a bad idea.
It's not only bad, it's not acceptable.
I think the, the conversation about shrinking the size of our government, which is ultimately where that conversation takes us, which I personally feel is a necessary conversation. I think we, you know, we've, you know, been able to discuss that at some level, and we've never really through council action or administration action, you know, have we come to the conclusion of where that shrink can happen, that it doesn't reduce a service level that someone is uncomfortable with reducing? And so we've all kind of walked around that conversation and said, there's going to have to be a service level that we're not comfortable with reducing, be reduced in order to find the hundred and fifty thousand dollars or the three hundred thousand dollars, whatever that number is. And I think those conversations are what should be on every agenda until they're resolved because obviously we have that financial problem. No different than the presentation about, you know, asking on main earlier today or conversations you're talking about now, where the problem is still there until we figure out how we can reduce the size of this government to a financial place that's appropriate. I, I, I do have the ability, though, to separate that from getting a budget on the books, to know that we are there and, 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 because I also don't know that we miss, we, we haven't fixed that problem in, you know, in the meetings previous to this point yet, you know, to get to that conclusion. I think we, we're all driving to the same point, we have to get there. We, we need to get there faster. But there's, there's only two meetings between now and when we need to pass this budget, right? Is that, is that correct?
That's two scheduled right now.
Because of the public hearings that are required for.
So I, I don't know that I could sit here and say without, you know, without us going after, you know, going at it with a hatchet, which we could do, we could force them to do. I don't know that that, that, you know, gets us to a, 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 a good collective decision about how we're going to shrink this government in a way that, again, is going to cause some discomfort. Something like wherever it happens. I don't know that we get that done into, in, you know, before we have to approve a budget. And so necess- rubber stamping this budget, I don't think has to necessarily be tied to ignoring those problems.
Yeah, I'll, if, if, are we finished? Good. I just, I just want to remind, you know, that, you know, we're, if you, if you look at the current budget, if we do this budget amendment that we're proposing for this current fiscal year, that business had a ten point four million dollar budget. I started the work here for, for this upcoming budget at nine point six million dollars. And I'm down, I've cut down to eight point eight million. I feel, I, I feel like I've, we, we've, we've cut a, a pretty good amount. I feel we've a, a, accomplished the desire of getting, of fixing the problems from FY nineteen. You know, I guess I'm at a loss on what additional cuts we need to, to look at or, or, or are out there unless you start affecting levels of service. And, and I guess that's what, that's the conversation that needs to have, you know, what, what level of service are you willing to, to do away with or to, to start affecting?
And, and I think that's where we all are very comfortable in saying, I think we need to be in that conversation. That there, that there appear to be some financial spins where we're not, the public may not be getting a bang for their buck for that service. Like maybe we're funding a service, but maybe the end result of that service isn't really reaching out and touching people. You know, and so that, that's a real conversation. And I think it's, it's not, I, I think we're definitely, it seems like as a group, all saying the same thing, that we, you, we should not feel like that we're done, that there's, there's a further place that we need to go. But I, I do, I do think that we can go down one road here and, and, and do our, what's necessary in case, in case an unforeseen reason causes more issue. We do, to get a budget on the books, but we can, that doesn't mean that we don't, aren't still carrying the course to make sure that every agenda that we have until that problem is resolved, uh.
Has this on it.
Has this on it.
What's the public hearing date for?
May, it would be May sixth, the Wednesday.
First meeting, first meeting in May.
And then adopt the first meeting in June.
Yes, sir. But I, you know, I, I have to agree with Mr. Dawson. I think this, and, and I'll, you know, everybody's spoken, I, I think there are some serious conversations that can still be had. I think we've met, I've, I've presented some, some cuts, and maybe it might be better on me to better educate where those cuts were, to, to, so, to, to, you know, make sure council has a good idea of that. But, you know, I'm not asking for, you know, two more conversations and that's be, that be done until the end of summer. I think we certainly need to keep this in the forefront because this is going to be probably the biggest thing that I deal with over the next two to three months, just watching the numbers and making sure we're, we're going down the right path and we don't have any, um, uh, surprises or any, any issues that we, that we did see coming.
So I don't know that how many meetings we have, uh, we have the second, we have the workshop at the end of this month. Correct?
Right now, we just have the, 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 the scheduled meetings, we're, we've gone back to the, just the legislative meetings.
So we have an oppor- we have an opportunity to add a meeting if we need it to.
With council's sees.
So to Mr. Dawson's point, which I think is valid, he's, he said it, he said it well, and pretty misstated, but basically the, the services, you know, we, we talked about service cuts, obviously that's not our goal to cut services to the people, but the, 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 the things that we are funding in this government that aren't reaching those people, um, that's what we need, the, the, the taxpayer, the people we serve. So the things that we're paying for that don't reach the people we serve, that's what we need to look at. And I think we can do that in a meeting or two and have that conversation and still need our May sixth public hearing and, and ultimately vote on it, adopt it at the beginning of June.
If, if this thing keeps, if this thing keeps going on like this, we already know our luster's going, we got to June tenth, where was she going, where was going to come up short file, short file then? Or you, are you in that frame of mind?
Yeah.
You already got that?
Oh, yes, sir.
Real problem.
Yeah, I think with the, the, the current budget, um, current year budget is, is, certainly has that in mind. Uh, the question that's going to come up is, maybe it's only May tenth, then, you know, and, you know, maybe the, that curve is flattened like it should with the social distancing. Maybe it's August tenth, you know, we simply don't know, uh, right now. I do have a buffer built in, um, to, to account for some of it, but if it's, if we're, you know, if this is going to be drawn out in six, eight months, ten months, you know, there's a lot of things that are going to have to be covered, and it's not just going to be us, but it's going to be, all localities are, are affected. And it's not just gonna be us, but it's gonna be all localities are affected.
And I don't think anybody on this council would suggest that this isn't, this isn't a difficult process for you. And we certainly appreciate the level of cuts or certainly the adjustments you make to the budgets and the fact that you're lowering our bottom line expenditures. We certainly appreciate that. But at the same time, we have to keep in mind that on top of the current year's budget and the shortfalls we had there and the major decrease in our unassigned reserves, and then on the heels of a significant loss and an unknown loss at this point regarding Mills tax and other taxes, we have to go into this thing as conservatively as we possibly can because we can't afford to do what, you know, we can't afford to repeat it this current budget year.
And last year.
Or last year, excuse me, this budget that we're still working from. So, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to take really close attention to ensure that that doesn't happen. We just frankly can't afford it. And to lose any more from our reserves, you know, we're already below the recommended percentage in unassigned reserves that our accounting firm puts, that's accepted by the accountants. And we're well below, and now we were close at one point, the minimum. And now we're well below the minimum and further below the suggested. So, we need to look at this real hard. And I appreciate it's a tall, but I think it needs to be done. And I would suggest that we have additional meeting or two as required to have this open discussion.
I'm getting the conversations that I'm hearing correctly. There's no one up here who doesn't realize that the timeline is the timeline no matter what. That gives us a month between now and that May sixth meeting to do the work that you're talking about. But we still need to make the recommendation or the motion to set that timetable and hold ourselves to that so that we maintain what we need to do.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think anyone here is suggesting that we try to escape the timeline. What we're asking is, you know, because we did have a whole month almost with no meetings, and that was the month with the most meetings we would have had regarding the budget, we're behind that curve. And so, what we're essentially doing is taking all those budget meetings that we had scheduled. So, here's what, seven of them, six or seven?
Total.
Total. And squeeze them really into one more. Understand with the knowledge that we may not come back with a final decision, but that's gonna initiate those conversations so that we're ready to hit the ground running when we have better information this summer. And we may come up with some cuts that we can all agree on that are appropriate. Others, like I said, we may have to have more conversations. I think a meeting this month would be appropriate. Maybe find a way for us to communicate a little bit without breaking public meeting laws so that we can come prepared and ready to move quickly. But certainly that the proposed schedule is appropriate. And I also believe that, you know, knowing that we're gonna have to modify the budget, if we're willing to put the work in, we'll get a better budget approved. It may not be something that we are completely happy with. But with the work that is gonna come this summer, hopefully we'll have a budget at that point that we're all very happy with. So, I'll make the motion that we adopt the proposed schedule for the adoption of the fiscal twenty-one budget as proposed with the understanding that we'll have another meeting this month. We'll work with staff to schedule appropriately.
Second.
Second.
A motion and a second. Anyone else have any discussion on that? If you would call and roll, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Goodman?
Aye.
Mr. Eckler?
Aye.
I'll just say, I was confirming with Mr. Riegus just to make sure. I'm ninety percent sure that you can advertise an eight point eight million dollar budget and approve an eight point seven million. I'm not sure that you can advertise an eight point seven and approve an eight point nine million.
That's been my understanding for the last ten years. So, it's true.
That's a good thing.
So, do you have, have at least something that we can advertise that's actionable even though it's not, may not be the one that gets the action?
The luxury you have this year that you've never had before is you have a built-in mulligan on your budget because you know we're gonna hit back and hit it hard this summer, assuming the governor allows us to. But our goal is that the amount of changes that have to be made this summer are limited and justified.
Before we move on to the new business thing, let's go ahead and address the budget meetings and figure out when you guys want that to happen. Do we wanna schedule one for next week? Or do we wanna wait two weeks so we have time to do the work?
I'll tell you the truth, it might help me if we go to two weeks out so I can get with individual council members and find out what, you know, get a good sense of this, the level of service that you have in your mind and get some ideas that I can compile for council.
I think that's more than reasonable, Sean.
Would it be okay for that meeting to be a six o'clock, like a normal budget work session? Does that work everybody's calendars?
That would be good.
Yeah.
That'd be a good one.
Probably first.
He just wants to call and set up time, or he just wanna?
I'll reach out to each of you. Or if you want to go ahead and call me in the morning or sometime. Yeah. Seven thirty? No, wait at least six thirty.
No, no more times. No, no, not your time.
So, we will move on to new business, which there is nothing under. And if not, we will then need to get a motion to go into closed session for one item under Virginia Code two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel regarding a loan modification request.
So, move.
Second.
Motion and second. If you'll call and roll, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Goodman?
Aye.
Mr. Eckler?
Aye.